Recording secretary, can you please start the meeting?
Chair, the meeting is now being recorded.
Thank you. I would like to call the regular meeting of September 22nd, 2025 to order. Would the secretary please call roll?
Commissioner Escamilla? Commissioner Leo? Commissioner Oliva?
Here.
Commissioner Pham?
Here.
Commissioner Wu?
Here.
Vice Chair Benninger? Chair Ramos?
Present.
Chair, quorum has been reached at 5:35 PM.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. If everybody can please stand and place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. Before we begin, I would like to remind my fellow commissioners to turn your microphones on when speaking and off when not speaking. And when speaking, please place the microphone about four inches away from you. Thank you. Members of the public may attend Planning Commission meeting in person or virtually via Zoom. I now invite the Commission Secretary to describe the way the public can access and participate in this meeting.
This meeting is being livestreamed via our portal at www.santa-anna.gov.com-public-portal and on YouTube at www.youtube.com/cityofSanAnnaVideos. If you would like to provide public comment, you may do so in the following ways. Join the meeting via Zoom. Enter the meeting ID number 89001686939. When the item you wish to comment on is being discussed, please select the hand icon to indicate that you would like to speak. Once called upon, remember to unmute yourself and state your name for the record. You can also join the meeting by calling 669-900-6833 and enter meeting ID 89001686939. When the item that you would like to comment on is being discussed, press 9 to let us know you would like to speak. You will be called upon by the last three digits of your phone number. After you are called upon, you may press 6 to unmute yourself. For those who are attending this meeting in person and would like to speak and make a public comment, please fill out a request to speak form and turn it in to the recording secretary. All speakers will have three minutes to speak. I will alert you when your time is up.
Thank you. Moving on to public comment on non-agenda or non-public hearing items. Secretary, does anybody wish to speak?
If you are attending this meeting in person and would like to comment on non-agenda or non-public hearing items, please fill out a request to speak form and turn it in to the secretary. If you are participating via Zoom and would like to comment on non-agenda or non-public hearing items, please select the hand icon to let us know you would like to comment. If you are calling in and would like to comment on non-agenda or non-public hearing items, please dial 9 and then 6 to unmute yourself. I will wait a few seconds. Chair, we do not have any speakers.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar.
I'd like to move item A and B in the consent calendar.
Thank you, Commissioner Wu. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve item A made by Commissioner Wu. Minutes from the September 8th, 2025 meeting. And item B, excuse absences with a second from Commissioner Oliva. Secretary, can you please call for a roll call vote?
Commissioner Escamilla? Commissioner Leo? Commissioner Oliva?
Aye.
Commissioner Pham?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Vice Chair Benninger? Chair Ramos?
Aye. And Commissioner Escamilla just entered. Can we please take a roll call vote one more time? Thank you. So Commissioner Escamilla is joining us at 5:39 PM.
Commissioner Escamilla?
Here.
Commissioner Leo? Commissioner Oliva?
Aye.
Commissioner Pham? Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Vice Chair Benninger? Chair Ramos?
Aye. And point of clarification, Commissioner Escamilla, we're voting on the consent calendar approval. As you're hearing.
Sorry, aye.
Thank you.
Motion approved by majority vote with Commissioners Leo and Vice Chair Benninger absent.
Thank you. Moving on to the business calendar, now that we're done with the consent calendar. We're going to move on to a public hearing. I will now review the process for the public hearing so that everyone knows what to expect. Staff will provide a presentation and answer questions from the Commission. The public hearing will be opened. The applicant will be given the opportunity to speak, limited to 15 minutes. Members of the public will be given the opportunity to comment, limited to three minutes. The applicant will be given the opportunity to respond to comments made by the public, limited to five minutes. The public hearing will be closed. Discussion will return to the Commission with formal action taken to approve, deny, or continue review of the application. Please consider the following suggestions when organizing your comments. Please state your name. It is voluntary to provide your address. State whether you support, oppose, or are neutral of the proposal. Your statement should include all pertinent facts within your knowledge. Please note, decision on these matters are final unless appealed within 10 days of any interested individual or party. Recommendations on these matters will be forwarded to the City Council at a later date for final determination. Item one. This is the time and place for conditional use permit number 2025-17 for the property located at 2590 South Red Hill Avenue, Unit C, located within the specific development number 88, SD 88 zoning district. Before we begin, do any Commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regard to this item? And Commissioners, if you can please state your name before commenting?
Nothing to disclose.
So you know disclosures. Case Planner Byron Liu, can you please provide a brief presentation?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chair and Planning Commission. Byron Liu, Assistant Planner One. Our first item on tonight's public hearing agenda is Conditional Use Permit, or CUP number 2025-17 for the project located at 2590 South Red Hill Avenue. And the CUP application is a request for approval to allow the sale of beer for onsite consumption through a Type 23 license, also known as small beer manufacturer, from the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. Staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving CUP number 2025-17 for the sale of beer for on-premises consumption as conditioned. The site's land use designation is District Center Medium, which allows a mix of uses, including retail and commercial spaces. And the site is also zoned as Specific Development 88. There are warehouse and manufacturing land uses to the north, City of Tustin to the east, warehouse and professional offices to the south, and warehouse and manufacturing to the west. The site itself is approximately 5.31 acres, while the unit will be 3320 square feet. On February 2nd, the City Council approved entitlements, changing the general plan land use designation to District Center and rezoning the site to SD 88, or Specific Development 88, which facilitated the development of the heritage mixed-use development project, which is now known as the Broadstone Village, which consists of three mixed-use buildings that were completed in 2020. And on July 31st, 2025, the applicant submitted a CUP application to allow the operation of a Type 23 license for the sale of beer for on-premises consumption. The proposed eating establishment will be Unsung Brewing Company's second location, with the first located in Anaheim, which was founded in 2014. The eating establishment is proposing to occupy a 2,524-square-foot tenant space on the first floor of the Broadstone Atlas Building, and they're planning to construct an additional 796-square-foot mezzanine level, adding up to the 3320 square feet as mentioned previously. A fenced outdoor patio, which is 369 square feet in size with a 26-seat capacity, will be provided along the eastern and southern elevations. And the eating establishment will provide pizza as a primary offering, as well as salads and other assortments, with the on-premise sale of beer as an ancillary use. The hours of operations will be as follows: Monday through Thursday, 11:00 to 10:00 PM; Friday to Saturday, 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM; and Sunday, 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Here are the site photos. The photo on the left shows the southern elevation facing the parking lot with the angled parking spaces where the... It's not shown here, but that's part of where the outdoor patio will come into play. And then on the eastern elevation, this is facing the eastern side, facing the arterial of Red Hill Avenue and the City of Tustin. Moving on to the site plan, as you can see here, the unit is highlighted in red. And it's on the corner of Red Hill Avenue and the drive aisle, the interior drive aisle of the Broadstone Atlas Development. And here's the floor plan. On the left, we can see the first floor plan consisting of a floor area of 2524 square feet, which will include a dining area, kitchen area, service area, restrooms, and storage areas. And we can see the outdoor patio seating arrangements along the southern and eastern elevations here. On the right, we can see the 769-square-foot mezzanine level. And again, here we have the elevation, so the one on top is the southern elevation showing the main entrance. This is going to, again, be facing the interior parking lot and interior drive aisle of the development, highlighted in the red box at this time. Besides signage that the tenant may be applying for later, they are not applying for any exterior modifications. And then the bottom elevation is the eastern elevation, again, facing the City of Tustin and Red Hill Avenue. Onto the project analysis. CUP requests, including alcoholic beverage licenses, are governed by San Anna Municipal Code Section 41638 and may be granted by the Planning Commission when it's demonstrated that the proposed project will not adversely impact the community. The subject site is not located within immediate proximity to playgrounds, schools, or religious institutions, with the nearest school Monroe Elementary School approximately 1.1 miles northwest and the nearest playground within the city limits of Santa Ana, Delhi Park, which is one mile away. The nearest religious institution is located approximately 2,800 linear feet to the northwest of the project site. In addition, the subject unit is located within the Broadstone Village mixed-use community, which was entitled to provide a highly amenitized community with a live, work, and play environment. The operational standards applicable to an ABC license and the conditions of approval, such as the good neighbor policy and property maintenance agreement, will mitigate any potential impacts created by the use and will ensure that the use will not negatively affect the surrounding community. The property also falls below the 20% threshold for high crime, and the Police Department has reviewed the applicant's request for sale of beer for on-premises consumption and has no concerns. Approval of the requested CUP is consistent with the general plan land use designation of District Center Medium, which allows a diverse mix of land uses, including commercial. And the project aligns with multiple of our land use element goals and policies, aiming to provide a balanced mix of land uses that meet the city's diverse needs, capture local spending, encourage reinvestment into the city, and promoting the city's image as a significant business-friendly regional activity center. The goal LU4 and policy LU4.1 also apply here, supporting improvements to the built environment and promoting complete neighborhoods, as well as the economic prosperity element, EP 3.11, which seeks to improve the city's image through the creation of vibrant and engaging public spaces. And in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act and the CECL guidelines, the project is categorically exempt from further review per Section 15301, Class 1 existing facility. And based on this analysis, a notice of exemption environmental review number 2025-77 will be filed for this project. There is no fiscal impact associated with this action, and staff recommends adopting a resolution approving Conditional Use Permit number 2025-17 for the sale of beer for on-premises consumption as conditioned. And that concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicant are here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Does the Commission have any comments or questions for staff? Commissioner Escamilla?
Yeah, so I guess on the hours of operation, was that a limitation placed by staff? Or was that basically the requested hours from the applicant? So I know it seems to end a little early. I think we usually allow till like midnight in most instances. Though I know that immediately next to residential, there might be other issues at play. So just trying to get a little more background there.
Yeah, thank you for the question, Commissioner Escamilla. The hours of operation were proposed by the applicant, and it does reflect closely their first business located in the Anaheim pack in the district.
Thank you.
Commissioner Oliva?
I just have a clarifying question. There won't be any alcohol or, not alcohol, but beer being brewed on the premises? It's just the sale of beer?
Yes, thank you so much for the question, Commissioner Oliva. The applicant's brewing and manufacturing site is located in Tustin, so there's no manufacturing onsite. They're just selling beer on.
Thank you. Thank you. I also have a question similar to Commissioner Escamilla's. In reviewing the resolution language, are we listing the restriction or the hour limit by which they can sell alcohol? Sorry, did my question make sense? In our language, are we restricting the sale of alcohol to the hours of operation?
The hours of operation listed in the conditions of approval are the larger parameters, while the proposed hours of operation that they're proposing are within those limits. So if we're referring to Exhibit A, Condition Number Three, with the sale, service, and consumption of alcoholic beverages limited to 7:00 AM to 12:00 AM, that is the limit as per the Santa Anna Municipal Code. However, the applicant has chosen to limit their own hours to be more restrictive than what's allowed.
Thank you. So if the applicant at a later time decided to change the hours of operation, they could sell alcohol until 12:00 AM?
Yes, because that's allowed by our Santa Anna Municipal Code.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pham?
Thank you, Chair. This is more of a clarifying question as well. I know that the census tract overlaps city boundaries. And although the staff report states that this specific license isn't subject to a concentration consideration, but for future reference, when we are looking at licenses that are subject to concentrations and the concentration is within the census tract but outside of city boundaries, how would one consider or evaluate that type of concentration?
Thank you, Commissioner. There are a couple of different ways we can look at it, just as an area-wide, how many licenses are in the general area? However, the way the state calculates concentration, it is based on a census tract basis. So we would use that analysis to inform our decision-making.
So city boundaries, it's not a considering factor. It's just if this is a concentration in this tract, although it's heavily concentrated in, let's say this project specifically in Irvine, but on the Santa Ana side, there's only one license that has been granted, we still look at the totality of the tract to make the decision.
That's right. So when you are evaluating a request for on-sale alcohol, like at a restaurant or cafe, overconcentration criteria still apply, but the process is different for applicants than as if it were a store. If it were a store, it would still be within the census tract, as Ricardo just said. But in its decision-making, the Planning Commission could take into account, like looking at a map to say, okay, well, I see that the majority are located in another jurisdiction. So from like a policy land use perspective, I don't see an issue with it here. So then you would vote yes on it, let's say. Or conversely, if the census tracts went across multiple jurisdictions, but the majority were already in Santa Ana, then you would factor that into your decision-making and say, okay, I get it. But, you know, the overconcentration is disproportionately affecting Santa Ana. So that's how the two would kind of come together, but it is based on census tract, no matter what.
Thank you. That's all for me, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Pham. Commissioner Wu?
Thank you. I was wondering, the patio area, could you clarify whether or not the patio is enclosed or will have a glass? Or is it just completely open?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Wu, for the question. As part of the operational standards, Exhibit B, Condition Number 14.
Can you speak into the mic?
Yes, excuse me. As part of the operational standards, Number 14, in Exhibit B, the applicant, as part of their submittal, they will be required to submit for a detailed outdoor dining plan. So there will be a fencing plan in place before the operation of the building, of the business can commence.
So administratively, you will evaluate the way that outdoor area is done, right? So would the staff, we be considering monitoring where I'll be sitting at a table in that patio, someone walks by and I hand them a beer? Or would there be a glass barrier where you still see out and the park lights, who's there, but you can't pass anything? But also, when it gets cold, you know, block the wind out?
That's a great question, Commissioner Wu. At this moment, the outdoor dining fencing plan has not been applied for. But when they do apply for it, it will go through the plan check process, where staff will work with the applicant to design an adequate fencing plan for the outdoor patio to address those concerns.
And also, the interior, are there fire escape doors on the interior? Is the interior being redesigned or just a patio?
Yes, Commissioner Wu, the applicant will submit tenant improvement plans to meet the building code requirements for the fire exit. So they will have that in place, yes.
So you'd be monitoring for fire escape?
Yes. So they will be submitting tenant improvement plans, and those will be up to the up-to-date building code and the fire codes.
Which should also include a fire detector, smoke detectors and stuff, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Wu.
Are there any other questions for staff from the Commission at this time? Great. Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Would the applicant like to speak on the matter? Can you please come forth just in case there are? Thank you.
Apologize. Thanks.
Of course. Are there any questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Escamilla?
No, just want to thank you for the site selection, obviously. I think, well, not obviously, but I'm aware of the operations over in Anaheim. So seeing this as a nice little satellite site. Is this, sorry, opening site number two, number three? Like, what's the kind of order that we're in?
This is our second one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Escamilla. Commissioner Oliva?
No questions. Just thank you for taking into consideration the building or mixed-use neighborhood you'll be opening in and taking that into your hours of operation.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Commissioner Pham, Commissioner Wu?
No comments from me. Thank you.
Thank you for adding to our nightlife in our city, as if we don't have enough. But what makes your beer so unique? Just out of curiosity?
Ours personally?
Yeah. Your brewing, yeah.
We just don't skimp on ingredients and quality. And we want to make sure that everything we put out there is generally well-received. So we don't try to make things extremely hoppy or extremely high alcohol. We kind of want to brew beer for everyone.
Thank you. As well, just thank you for doing business in Santa Ana.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Of course. Well, if there are no more questions, we'll now open it to other members of the public. Recording secretary, have we received any written communications, or is there a member of the public that would like to comment on this item? And you can take a seat now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, we have received a total of zero emails in the form of public comments for this item before 3:30 PM, deadline which has not been distributed to the Commission since there was no public comments through email. If you are attending this meeting in person and would like to comment on this item, please fill out a request to speak form and turn it in to the secretary. If you are participating via Zoom and would like to comment on this item, please select the hand icon to indicate that you would like to speak. If you are calling in and would like to comment on this item, please dial 9 and then 6 to unmute yourself. I will wait a few seconds. Chair, we have two speakers on Zoom. Atlas resident, if you can please unmute yourself. You will have three minutes to speak.
Hi, just want to make sure you guys can hear me. Okay, so I would like to oppose the CUP approval. First and foremost, as a resident here at Atlas, I have some public safety concerns. Our building has experienced multiple break-ins within the recent months, and we already have issues with security. So introducing a brewery could increase, you know, nighttime foot traffic and just create more opportunities for crime and loitering. We have issues with people following us into the parking structure and through the doors, even using our fobs and stuff like that. So this is a huge concern of mine as a resident. And this isn't speculation. It's a concern based on, you know, my current lived-in experience as a resident. And my second pressing concern is the parking impacts. It's already a pretty serious challenge to find parking or for our guests to find parking. So introducing a tenant that is going to attract business, particularly during the evenings and weekends, will only increase this burden. And I do have some questions, but I guess I'll save those till the end. My third concern is just the noise and quality of life. Breweries, you know, tend to operate well into the evening, and I appreciate Unsung Brewery's, you know, limiting their own hours. But at this point, you know, as a resident living here, 10:00 PM, you know, some of us don't have normal working hours. We work at night or we work and sleep during the day. So this is very disruptive to our way of life. And, you know, even though the project is exempt under the CEQA, it involves a unique land use conflict. It introduces alcohol sales and evening activity directly beneath residential units in a building that is already struggling with safety and infrastructure concerns. So I just really wanted to express my concern. And, yeah, at the moment, that's... Oh, and I'm sorry. If I could, I would like to ask one of my questions if a parking study has been conducted, because like I previously stated, parking is already a concern for our guests and, you know, during the day, during the evening. So this is obviously not going to help. So I wanted to know if there was a parking study done for this business.
Thank you, Atlas resident one. Next speaker on Zoom is Yesenia Marujo. If you can please unmute yourself?
Recording secretary, I'd quickly like to clarify that at this time, we're taking public comments on item number one, which is a conditional use permit. I don't know if the other individuals are here to comment on this item or to provide comments on a non-agenda item. Can we ask, please?
Ms. Yesenia Marujo, can you please unmute yourself? And if you can please confirm that your public comment is in regards to item number one, the conditional use permit?
Si, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Yesenia Marujo. Yesenia, un momento. Tenemos una pregunta. Usted quiere dar comentario en el tema del permiso para el nuevo restaurante de cerveza y pizza? No, solamente es para el plan de sonificación de Santana. Okay, su comentario se puede dar más al loto, pero en este momento solo son comentarios en ese permiso. Okay. Gracias.
Sorry.
Chair, I think you're going to have to translate yourself for that one.
Yes. So I was asking the person, I believe it was Yesenia. Yes, so I was asking the person, I believe it was Yesenia Marujo, whether her intent was to comment in this public hearing, specifically on the conditional use permit for item one. She shared that no, her comment is for a non-agenda item. So I shared that at this time, we are only taking comments for item number one, and she may comment at a later time.
The next speaker we have on Zoom is Ms. Yesenia Camacho. If you can, please unmute yourself and confirm that your public comment is in regards to item number one, the conditional use permit?
Hi, yes, my name is Yesenia Camacho. I wanted to do a public comment earlier, but I wasn't sure if our names were skipped, because me and Yesenia are together, and we weren't chosen. So I just wanted to see, like, when would we be able to speak?
So at this time, we're taking comments on item number one, a conditional use permit. Any comments that are not on this item would be taken at a later time.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Recording Secretary, are there any other individuals wishing to comment online?
No, we don't have any more public speakers.
Thank you. So the public hearing remains open. We'll be able to call the applicant back up if we have more questions. Staff, if we have questions of staff, would we need to close the public hearing to make those? Yes, okay. Since our public hearing is not closed yet, can I please ask the applicant to come back? Thank you, so I invited you up, as I saw, it seemed like you wanted to comment in response to some of the comments that were made, and I'd also like to see if there are additional questions from the commissioners.
No, I just was, I did have some answers to some of the questions that one of the individuals brought up. The parking area had been approved previously from the municipality code to be used as a restaurant. And that's technically how we're building the space out as a restaurant. Yes, we are a brewery, we make beer. But our main focus of the spot is for food. I was not aware of the crime issue at the space. So I can understand how that would be a concern for the resident. So I understand that. I do know that the, I frequent the space a lot. I do know that there is a lot of security that is walking around the grounds. And I can imagine that that would be increased, of course, if something became an issue as well. We want to make the space work, and we want to make sure that we're working with the community. It's one of the biggest reasons we want to be there is because we want to be a positive force there. So in terms of noise and all those types of things, we would be willing to do whatever it takes, whether that's hours of operation, whether it's the way we're constructing the space for sound barrier, anything of that nature. But I do know if we don't go in the space, the landlord's vision is for a food establishment to eventually go in there, so.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the commission? Commissioners Camia?
Yeah, so I guess in general, when we do some of these CUPs, we'll typically do like a six-month check-in with staff. And sometimes it doesn't even come to us. It's really more just of an update, evaluation of any potential code enforcement issues and complaints. And then again, just so we have this kind of temporary, sorry, not temporary, but we just have this evaluation period where if any of these issues are seen, we can address them kind of at that point. Is that something you're amenable to? I think it might already, in fact, even be within the recommended actions. So I just wanted to just...
Yeah, absolutely, thank you. I would also add that, it sounds like you've been to our space before. Our branding is superhero-themed, we're a comic book brewery, so the people that we attract tend to be a little bit on the gamer side of things. We do a lot of things for the community in terms of, you know, we have a drink and draw where people come in, and we have a banzai night, book club. So things to try and get the community involved. We're not a sports bar, we're not looking to be a place to watch any games and get rowdy. We take the safety of our staff extremely seriously, so. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioners Camia. Commissioner Oliva? Thank you, Commissioner Fam?
I've seen the crowds at Comic-Con, it does get a little rowdy. No, no questions, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
It was a hangout for nerds, huh?
Pardon me?
It's a hangout for nerds, for a kid.
I didn't say it.
No, I'm just kidding around. You're not, the conditional use permit is not for cabaret, so you won't be having dance or music, right? Or entertainment?
No, we're gonna...
You're focusing on food, as you said, right?
Yeah, we will have ambient music for what you would expect at a restaurant. That is it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, are there any additional questions or comments from the commission at this time? Thank you, would you like to make any closing statements on this? Sorry, applicant. That may be the person that already commented. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So with that, we had one public speaker on this item. Each public speaker is allotted three minutes. They receive those three minutes, so our public hearing is now closed. I'd like to see if there are any additional questions for staff from the commission before we take a motion. So I'll ask a quick question of staff. So in one of the public comments, a resident mentioned parking concerns and also just concerns around the use within the residential space. So I have an idea why this may be allowed and why there may be exemptions, but could staff speak to that briefly?
Yes, the overall development, as was described by Byron, was contemplated as a mixed-use development. So when that development moved forward, there was a specific development zoning district that was crafted specifically for that development, contemplating all the different uses, square footages, unit counts, with a number of parking ascribed for each unit, as well as for the commercial, retail, commercial spaces that were built out as part of this development. Since the construction of this development, this space in particular has sat vacant, and this would be the first tenant to occupy it. However, like I mentioned, in the initial crafting of the standards and development of the site, all the parking was built into that original calculation, which this would comply with.
Thank you for that additional information. With that, do we have Commissioner Fam?
Just a quick question. The base parking calculation, I'm sure it does, but they are adding square footage in terms of the mezzanine. Does that impact the parking calculations in any meaningful way?
Thank you, Commissioner Fam, for your question. It wouldn't impact it in a meaningful way. The development Broadstone Atlas itself is made up of 483 units, and it has a total of 840 parking spaces. So the additional, I believe, 697 square feet, as compared to the 5.31 acres of the property site itself, would be considered negligible.
So it's overparked already? Meaning there's excess of parking, available parking for the use?
Yes.
Thank you.
If I could just add to that, Commissioner, since the square footage that's being added is a mezzanine space, mezzanine spaces such as what's being proposed would not be parked. So this would be parking exempt per the calculation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fam. Are there any additional questions or comments from the commission? Great, with that, is there a motion on item one?
So I'll move to approve the resolution 2025-17. The resolution for CUP 25, sorry, 2025-17.
Thank you, we have a motion from Commissioner Camia?
And I'll second Commissioner Camia's motion.
And we have a second from Commissioner Oliva. Secretary, can you please call a free roll call vote?
Commissioners Camia?
Aye.
Commissioner Leo? Commissioner Oliva?
Aye.
Commissioner Fam?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Vice Chair Benninger? Chair Ramos?
Aye.
Motion approved by majority vote with Commissioner Leo and Vice Chair Benninger absent.
Thank you, we're going to move on to item two. And I would also just like to share that I will take comments on any non-agenda items after item two. So if anybody is on Zoom, you can comment after this item. Thank you. Item two, this is the time and place for tentative track map number 2025-03 for the property located at 930 North Grant Avenue, located within the transit zoning code ST84 zoning district. Before we begin, do any commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regard to this item? Great, seeing no disclosures, Case Planner Jerry Gavada will provide a brief presentation.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. This next item is a request for a tenant track map at 930 North Grant Avenue, located within Ward 6. The applicant's requesting approval of tenant track map 2025, sorry, 2025-03 to subdivide an existing five-unit live-work development into five condominium units. Staff is recommending that the planning commission approve this item as conditioned. The project site is located at the northeast corner of Grant Avenue and Stafford Street, as highlighted in red, has the general plan line use destination of District Center High, and is located within the Transit Village Zoning District of the Transit Zoning Code, known as specific development number 84. The property is surrounded by commercial uses to the north and east, and multifamily housing to the south and west. The property is approximately 13,500 square feet in size, and as mentioned, is currently developed with a three-story building containing five mixed-use, sorry, five live-work units, as well as associated parking and landscaping. In 2018, permits were issued for the construction of the subject development, as well as the associated parking and landscaping. Construction concluded in 2021, and the applicant submitted the subject tenant track map application to the city in March of this year. This is a site photo of the east elevation of the subject development. The applicant's not requesting any approvals to alter the interior nor the exterior of the development. This is the proposed subdivision that the applicant's requesting. Again, the applicant's requesting to allow for a subdivision for condo purposes, meaning that each individual unit can be sold as a condominium. No additional alterations, again, to the interior or the exterior being proposed. On average, each of these units measures about approximately 1,300 square feet, and then they range from two to three bedrooms each. In terms of project analysis, subdivisions like this one are subject to Chapter 34 of the San Ana Municipal Code, as well as the State Subdivision Map Act. Staff has determined that the tenant track map is consistent with the San Ana Municipal Code, as well as the State Subdivision Map Act. Conditions of approval have been included to ensure the site's landscaping, architectural design, and CCNRs continue to comply with the applicable standards of the Municipal Code. In addition, no adverse environmental impacts to fish or wildlife populations were identified as part of this project. And it's also located within an urbanized area and meet the requirements of the State Subdivision Map Act. In terms of general plan consistency, the project is consistent with various policies and goals of the general plan. In particular, the project is consistent with Goal One of the line use element that encourages projects that are of high quality, as well as with the housing element policies that support a diverse housing stock for the city. In terms of the California Environmental Quality Act, the project falls within the analysis of the Environment Impact Report that was prepared for the Transit Zoning Code. Because of that, a notice of determination will be filed for this project. There's also no fiscal impacts associated with this project. With that, again, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the requested application as conditioned, and that includes staff's presentation on this matter.
Thank you. Does the commission have any comments or questions for staff? Commissioners Camia?
Thank you. So Jerry, I guess I'm just trying to understand, what is it that, I guess, triggered or made it so that we can kind of subdivide and kind of create these condos here in this specific time and place? And I'm just trying to understand if this is due to underlying liability issues, so why they didn't start off as condominiums? And if there is anything else that we could do from a policy perspective as far as making it easier just to have this kind of be part of the initial application? And any comments or insights there? And if it's kind of beyond the scope of this conversation, totally okay. But I just see it as, whatever we can do to kind of speed up the creation of condo units, of homeownership opportunities and kind of these multifamily settings, whatever we can do to understand that would be useful.
Thank you, Commissioners Camia. So the initial request back in 2019 did not encompass this scope of work. So this is something that the applicant approached the city last year with regards to that. And we basically provided them with the avenue to proceed. So it was something that wasn't contemplated by the applicant. This particular applicant, as you may know, has developed other similar developments in the city past this one and did request a condominium map as part of those developments. But for this one, they did not. But on the other end, as part of our zoning code update, we could kind of look into how we could further streamline this process.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you Commissioners Camia. Are there any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Oliva?
I think I'm a little confused when I looked at this item. Since it's no longer going to be live-work, does that mean that the businesses that we see, they're no longer going to exist there? Or am I reading this incorrectly?
Just to clarify, Commissioner Oliva, the request is for a subdivision to allow for condominiums purposes to be able to sell each individual unit at their own. So the live-work component is still going to be there. And as part of this application, the applicant, the owner, has no desire to displace any of the current tenants.
Thank you for the clarification.
Chair.
Commissioner Fam?
I guess my question is more similar in line with Commissioner Camia. If this project were to be developed initially as a subdivided tract, would the project as is, had been, would have been approved? Meaning, my question is coming in line with, is this a pathway to condom, to subdividing a lot that would not have been able to be developed as condominiums? But for some avenues, I just want to make sure that this is not a loophole that we are encouraging, rather that this lot would have complied with all the required standards that would have been built if it were condominiums?
That is correct, Commissioner Fam. So there's no loopholes being proposed at this time. The request, it's in accordance with Chapter 34. So Chapter 34 of the Municipal Code requires any form of subdivision for more parcels, requires it to be approved by the zoning administrator. Anything over four requires approval by the planning commission, which is why this application is before you today.
And so the project has all the prerequisite utility separations, address assignments that would suffice as a condominium? It's just that now they're coming in to subdivide the parcel? Is that correct?
That is correct. So when they pulled permits back in 2018, when they went through the plan check process, this development was built to have standalone units. So all utilities are separate.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fam, Commissioner Wu?
To understand where we are, this has been progressing for several years since its construction and sale. So you have five condos that is owned by one owner right now, right?
There's five units owned by one owner, correct, Commissioner Wu?
And in passing this ruling, that owner can sell it as five, as one property, or subdivide into five separate property that can be either just condominium or live and work, right?
That is correct, yes.
So it's conceivable if it's sold as five separate one, one would want to, to be condo. Another one would want to be live at work, or another one wanted to be live at work, and the other two would want to be just condos, right?
So just to clarify, Commissioner Wu, they're not changing the product type. So these are live-work units?
I understand that, and they're probably sharing the same sewer system and neutral kinds of things that are built together, right? And it's a subdivision kind of planning ruling, right?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
I'm trying to understand the implication of not today, but tomorrow. It's the kind of question that Commissioner Leo would ask, you know? If we make a decision today, how will it affect tomorrow on other property? Because we have a lot of live-and-work properties, and we have a lot of condos, you know? And so I'm trying to understand how does this impact not just this property, but other future property that, that where the choices that you could break up the property for sale, or you could, you know, sell as one whole thing? And when you have individual owners, you get possessive of what you want, and you get possessive of what the other person is doing that's affect you.
Yeah, if it helps break it down for the commission, nothing physically is changing. So with that as a baseline, then, the decision comes down to the commission. Do you support the project request to create ownership opportunities for each of these units? Or do you wish for it to not and remain a rental community?
With the understanding that the buyer or the people that are doing it are aware of the situation because it'd be disclosed.
Correct, exactly. And then, of course, if it were approved, then the conditions of approval require that CCNRs be adopted, like any other homeowners association that would maintain sewer systems, landscaping, lighting, all that good stuff that comes with being in a condo association or an ownership unit as opposed to a rental community.
Thank you. That's what I was, just wanted to make sure to go on record that that was good and clear.
Thank you, Commissioner Wu. I also have some questions for staff, a bit different. So I know that in the past, the City Council has discussed a right of first refusal, which essentially means that when there is a conversion of this sort, existing tenants, and here the renters, would be given the first opportunity to buy the unit that they live in. So I'm wondering if one that was discussed with the applicant at all, and whether we know if they have any intention to give their existing renters that live there the first opportunity to buy the unit that they live in? And if not, are there any existing city policies that could be applied here?
So we could defer that question to the applicant with regards to that. My understanding from the applicant is they just want to have the flexibility for the event that they do want to be able to sell them, they could sell them. And I believe one of the tenants currently operating there is actually interested in actually potentially owning one of the units. So I'm sure they've discussed that with their, with their tenants. But like I mentioned, there's no desire right now to vacate anyone from the premises. The city, as part of the housing element in the general plan, will continue to reevaluate that policy, but I don't believe we have initiated that with CDA with regards to that. There's no other policies in place right now that would prevent this subdivision.
Thank you. And then a follow-up question. So you mentioned that there is no intent to displace any of the existing tenants. Would that mean that they're, well, and I'll ask all of the questions to the applicant as well. But do we know what their timeline is to sell these units? So in hearing that comment, I'm unsure if they're willing to let their existing tenants continue to rent until they're ready to potentially buy or move out and then sell?
Yeah, so similar to some of the other developments that this applicant has developed, they just want to have like the flexibility to be able to sell these units in the future. There's no timeline that has been disclosed with staff yet.
Okay, so in us approving today, and then if the council approved this, it wouldn't necessarily mean that they're going, that they're going to sell immediately, but they have the option to do so at a later time?
That is correct. So Commissioner Chairman Ramos, if you remember, a couple of months ago, the Red Hill at the Row, for example, that development was initially entitled back in 2020. And then earlier this year, they came in with a condominium subdivision proposal to be able to potentially allow the subdivision of the units in a future date. So similar situation here, there isn't really a timeline that's been set in place yet.
Okay, thank you. And then are there relocation provisions that would apply here when the, whenever the developer decides to sell the units as condominiums?
I don't believe we have any policies in place that would trigger that, but I'm not too sure if are just cause eviction.
So they're local or state.
Yeah. Yeah, because I guess that's the, the interaction we're seeing here, right? Because it's a five-unit residential complex that's rental. It does fall under the just cause eviction ordinance. Individual condominiums are exempted under our regular just cause eviction regulation here. So I guess that would be one potential impact of the condo-ization. So I do think that, you know, philosophically and policy-wise, we should prevent that loophole from happening and having at least the same level of protections, or there's got to be something there.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. So I ask these questions and also wondering what, if any, additional conditions we can legally add today, both around any relocation assistance or displacement protection, along with language that would encourage right of first refusal, which would mean that the existing tenants renters have the first option to buy the unit they live in. And that might be a question for our attorney.
So what I would say is that if there are any, I just quickly took a glance, so I can't give you a full and complete answer right now. But if there are any local regulations, anything in our municipal code or even state law that's going to be applicable, it will be applicable. So our action today would not supersede that. So I would, my inclination to say that we would not need any additional conditions. We always have a condition that says that you comply with the San Ana Municipal Code and any local or state or federal laws that are applicable.
Thank you. And in the case that we would like to provide additional protections that would seem in alignment with our housing element.
So you'd be considering some additional conditions that would go above and beyond what we would be, what we have contained in our municipal code? Is that the question that you're asking?
Potentially.
Chair, I guess we would have to look at what that condition would be. And if that were the case, I would recommend that you continue the matter so that we could look to see whether it would be an appropriate condition or not. I don't, I would not be able to tell you right now.
Thank you.
Whether that would be permissible or not. We'd have to research that essentially.
Thank you. Commissioner Escamilla.
Yeah, and I think it is just the laws will apply, but the way that our laws are structured, we have additional protections for rental properties versus the individual condos, which we allow a little bit more flexibility on. But when we convert from one to the other, I don't think we have anything that really addresses that locally. So I would like more time to take a look at that. I guess the other question then for staff is, is there any sort of time sensitivity? If I'm hearing that, you know, this is really just for options in the future, is this something we can take a look at? Because I don't want to kind of craft an entire policy recommendation, or even just like modifications to the agreement up here without really understanding the details. So that's kind of where I'm at, but I don't know if there's a different opinion from the property owner or other sort of time sensitivities that we're looking at here.
Thank you, Commissioner Escamilla.
Chair.
Yeah, I'm going to give staff the opportunity to respond, and I'll also remind all of us that the public hearing hasn't been opened yet, so we will have the opportunity to speak directly to the applicant if present, and also take public comments from anyone else in the public that may have an opinion on this matter.
I have a question.
I would like to allow staff to respond to Commissioner Escamilla's questions and comments.
Well, along the question.
But I'd like to take their response first, and then we'll go to Commissioner, to you, Commissioner Wu. Thank you.
But do we have the authority to make law?
So we're going to allow staff to reply to Commissioner Escamilla, and then we'll take your question. Thank you, Commissioner Wu.
You know, at a very high level, so purpose of a public hearing is to also obtain the testimony of the applicant too, to see what their intents or timelines might be. And to then use that to either approve as recommended, or approve as modified, or, you know, continue or deny. So I would recommend that we first, that the commission think about what are the sort of objectives of any conditions of approval that you're thinking about adding or modifying, right? Are you intending to provide, you know, protections for existing tenants? Are you intending to simply give them the first option, you know, in a purchase? You know, try to silo them a bit so that they're more formulated. Think about that while we receive the testimony from the applicant, because some of these may already be answered by that. And then if there is a desire to continue it, to allow staff to research these topics. You know, what I would only ask is that you kind of, we go back to planning commission basics, which I'll just friendly remind, like, is there a nexus between what is being asked and this project? That's the first thing. Then, second of all, if there is a nexus, is there a proportionality between what you're asking versus the, the request? And then lastly, is it equitable treatment of this application versus other applications? And so with that, I think I would recommend that you, you know, formulate your ideas, but also give the applicant the opportunity to answer some of your questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Wu, would you like to ask your question now?
Yeah, I was wondering about jurisdiction and, you know, is this a council thing to craft something new? Or as, as city attorney advises, that we have existing laws that will fall, or rulings that already fall under. But since this is the public hearing portion, I, you know, I don't know what an applicant will want to think about today, something that's in the future hasn't happened. Kind of lost, had to see the purpose of this.
Staff, do you have a response to that? If you have one.
I didn't follow the specific question, but we're more than happy to answer any specific questions you have. You want to rephrase that, Commissioner Wu?
I don't know how to phrase it. Basically, I don't understand, since this issue is not on the table, crafting a seemingly like a new, new resolution or city law, when we may already have something on the books, you know? And the only thing that left for us is not to make a ruling in order to get this passed today, but have to postpone it. Give staff time to research and find out.
Thank you. I think that was part of what Senior Assistant City Attorney Melissa Crossway mentioned. If the commission so pleases and wants us to do further research into specific items, those are things that we can take away from the meeting tonight, do further research, and then come back if that's the direction of the commission.
Yeah, and if I understand it, for years, we have advocated for exactly what she asked for. But aside by the City Council, standing that we didn't want to displace tenants. That's why I understand it, researching here, some is not remaining to these property.
Thank you, Commissioner Wu. I'm not going to take questions and comments from the commission for the time. I'm going to open the public hearing, and then we'll have the opportunity to ask additional questions and comments after hearing from the applicant, and also asking questions to the applicant. So the public hearing is now open. Would the applicant like to speak on the matter?
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Mario Mendoz. I represent the official part of, what is the name? Publican part, sorry. It's my first time in this kind of panel. So I don't know if there is any specific.
Would you like to, you can say anything you'd like, and then we'll can ask questions.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's very simple. The main reason that we want to, to, to obtain this division, it's because as an investors, it's easier to obtain a loan with the banks if we have a divided, the, the, the building, you know? In comparison, if you have the whole property, the rates that you can obtain, it's better. Currently, we have a couple of properties pending to continue with the, with the investment in, in San Ana. So we need to obtain money to continue with, with our projects. So I understand that we tried to obtain this, this division in the past, at the beginning of the project. However, my ex-partner and contractor passed away a couple of months ago. So just we are continuing with the original idea. But at the end, the most important for us is to, to keep with, with the tenants, because at the end, they help us to continue with the other projects in San Ana. So we don't want to put for sale never, but if it's necessary, obviously, we will cover any regulation enforced at the moment to do that. But currently, we don't have any object to, of any goal to put for sale the property. It's only for financial aspects. I don't know if it's enough.
Thank you. There may be some questions from staff. Commissioner Escamilla, would you like to begin?
No, no, thank you. And yeah, that actually makes, you know, some sense to me. You know, and really, I think what we're going back and forth here with, with the commission is just that the way that we have our current laws structured, we have a lot of really, you'd say, strong rental protections for tenants. You know, once you hit that four-unit mark, just cause eviction laws come into play, and you basically can't kick out a tenant that's been paying rent. And, you know, there's a lot of things that are on the books. You know, once we kind of go to condos, you know, without any sort of agreement or modification to the agreement for the condo-ization of your, your property, you can, you know, and not to say that you will, but you legally have the right, or would have the right, to sell and then replace the tenant, you know, unless there was a specific, oh my gosh, rental agreement in place for, you know, that was maybe multi-year, or had some provisions for renewal. So then that's why we're kind of going back and forth, I think, a little bit on asking more, like, these bigger picture questions. It's that, you know, this is just a five-unit condo-ization, but if there was a twenty, two-hundred unit, unit apartment that gets subdivided, and then everybody, you know, is able to be basically removed from that property, those are the kinds of questions that, unfortunately, your small little project has implications for larger, for larger projects. So I do appreciate the explanation on the financial aspect of just being able to take out lower interest rate loans on a condo versus a commercial, which will then be like a fifteen, like, year loan rather than a thirty-year loan. So I definitely understand all of those provisions there. So I guess my, my question is, and this is something I think you're the only person in the room that can answer, is are there already existing extended rental agreements or leases with the, the particular tenants that will keep them in place for a certain amount of time? Like, can we be sure that no one is going to be, you know, removed within the next, like, six months to a year, or anything like that? Like, what do these lease terms look like?
Yeah, you can both speak.
My name is Alina. I'm also the co-owner of the building. So we do have our tenants, they all have leases for a year, two years, so it's, and we're gonna, our intention is to renew the leases. We don't want to kick out anyone. Like you said, we only want to subdivide that way we can refinance the buildings with better terms. And if, you know, that time comes where we have to sell for whatever reason, we will definitely give the option to our tenants. But they all have leases in place. We can, we're not planning to kick out anyone.
Thank you. So just to ask directly and confirm, would you be open to a condition that would require that when you do sell, that you give the first opportunity to buy to the people that live there at that time?
For sure. We have no problem with that.
So you would be open to that language in your?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And then other questions that we had were around relocation assistance. So at this time, it does not sound like you're planning to sell anytime soon, but you'd have the option to. It also sounds like you plan to renew existing leases, which is great. If you do sell at some time and you need the tenants to obviously vacate the property, do you have any plans to provide relocation assistance at this time?
Yes, we can definitely provide relocation assistance. Like I mentioned, we, right now, we don't have the intention of ever selling the building. But, you know, things happen in life, so if that, something like that happens and then we have to sell, we can definitely give, like I said, the option for the tenant to buy the property. If they, if they don't want to do it, then we can offer relocation assistance.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from Commissioner, Commissioner Wu?
I don't like the direction of where this is going, but I want to respect the fact that you two are husband and wife. but I want to respect the fact that you two are husband and wife, and you're investing in this for your future, right? And you're not a big-time corporation, right? You're not a multinational.
No.
You're not a Donald Trump.
No.
Right. You're looking at trying to increase the generational wealth of your family by placing your fortune, your interests, your repairs, your servicing your tenants in that building, right? So I'm looking at it from another perspective of how banks operate, you know? I understand why you're trying to do that from protecting your investment part, because.
Commissioner Wu, can you please ask direct questions to the applicant?
Yes, I'm getting there. And the question is that you're more motivated by the fact of how you're going to finance your property and get better turns from it, right? Right, which has nothing to do with displacing the tenants. The tenants come with the rental agreement, right?
We actually need tenants, you know, that they help us out.
You support it because you had to set that in your document for the loan, show who your tenants are, how long is their term and all that, right?
And obviously, we get a better mortgage rate. We can, you know, get better leases and all that, because it's going to help us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fan?
Currently, do you have more than five tenants?
We have five tenants, because it's the five buildings, or not five buildings, the five units. So they're all rented out.
So.
One tenant that rents out the.
Okay, so then they operate a commercial element, and then they themselves live.
And they live there, because it's, the first floor is commercial, then second and third floor is living. So they can live on the second and third floor, and they can have their business on the first floor.
Because the reason I ask is that I just perused Google Earth, and I saw that there's a gym that occupies two of the.
Not anymore. He left. Now we have a barber shop, and then it's mostly offices. But it's a barber shop, and then the others are offices.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Leva, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
I'm a little wary of having the applicants commit to something verbally when city staff can't give us confirmation on what's in the municipal code at the moment. So I would err on the side of caution with what we're having the applicant say or commit to at the moment.
Right. I'm happy to answer. Also, staff will probably have some comments that they want to make as well. We kind of wanted to let you finish with your process before we did that. But I, what I would say is that, we appreciate your conversation and asking the applicant and the applicant's amendment ability to certain things. There are some state laws and some local laws at issue here. So I would caution with, I apologize that I wouldn't be able to tell you right now this moment, but there are, again, state laws and local laws that are implicated. So we would not be able to craft something that's necessarily appropriate and defensible right now. So that's why I think we'd mentioned that if you, if this is something that you desire to do, you continue the matter so we could look into it. And I defer to staff as well if they wanted to make any additional comments. But I think generally, we're just going to, we're just cautioning you that there are some things to look at, and we don't want you to impose something on the applicant that you may not necessarily be able to enforce later.
Yes, thank you for that. And I'd like to clarify that. My questions were to see the level of interest, but understand that there is a process and would want to follow a process that is not rushed, both out of respect to the applicant, staff, and all of us here. So thank you, Commissioner Leva, for raising those thoughts as well. Are there any other questions from the commission at this time?
I was just going to go to the timing question. So since this is mostly regards to financing, just wondering if there is any sort of urgency or particular timelines that you all are looking at? Because I think we can probably craft something that's a little bit more flexible in the sense of, you know, directing staff to explore but still proceed. Like, we don't necessarily need to take a look at it. It might be a decision for the, oh my gosh, for the council more directly. So that could be, I think, potentially something. I just want to get a better sense of, you know, how much time do we have from your perspective? And obviously, the faster and sooner would be better for you, but, you know.
So we have a loan coming up, so it's, we're trying to, like I said, pay off that loan. So that's why we want to get it subdivided, so we can refinance each unit, get better rates, and then pay off that loan that's coming up in a couple of months.
So is that like a 10-year, 15-year commercial, like, versus like a full 30-year? Like, what's?
We want to get like a 30-year. Right now, we have, we had a loan for five years, so that one's coming up.
Oh, okay, yeah.
We have a Harmony loan for construction, so it's too expensive. Continue with the other properties that we have pending to receive approval from the city in Santa Ana. So the best way to do that is to obtaining a very.
Like a 30-year.
Conventional loan, yeah.
Yeah, conventional loan, pay off that Harmony loan, maybe get a little bit more money, and we have other properties in Santana that we're working on, and then we need to get money to finish those properties in Santana.
Appreciate the details and your candidness and openness. And I know it's like, it doesn't seem like, you know, it is, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of people, but, you know, for anyone watching at home, and this being a public forum, you know, this is, always appreciated the candor. So, thank you.
Thank you. So I'll follow up on Commissioner Escamilla's question. So if this item were continued, the earliest it would come back would be in two weeks. I don't want to say that's how quickly it would come back, because that would be dependent on conversations that you all might have with staff and staff doing additional research. So it could also potentially be a month. Would a continuance of that time negatively impact or affect what you're trying to do with your financing?
No, because we have a couple of months still on the loan, so it's fine. We have a couple of months. I'm not sure how many months, but we do have.
Okay, thank you for the transparency. And it wouldn't be our interest to delay this, but I just wanted to understand if we continued that this would not negatively impact you, and you've said that it wouldn't. So again, appreciate the transparency you're having with us today. Are there any other questions or comments from the commission?
You've been applying this process in 2023 and earlier, right?
I'm sorry.
Didn't I hear something about 2023?
Yes, we actually, so this building was, it was done with our business partner. And he actually, I guess, he submitted the subdivision way before, a couple of years before. I don't know why he didn't continue. I guess he didn't have enough money. To continue, like he's mentioned, he passed away in January, so we kind of took over and kept the process going.
Thank you.
It was the original idea at the beginning of the project, so it's not new.
Money constraints sometimes.
Likewise, if this, we haven't decided whether or not we would continue, we could also pass it to get it going. That also would suit you as well.
Thank you. Thank you for your answers today. You can take a seat. We're going to see if there's any other comments on the side.
Thank you.
Thank you. Recording Secretary, have we received any written communication? Or is there a member of the public that would like to comment on this item?
Chair, we have not received any public comments. If you are attending this meeting in person and would like to comment on this item, please fill out a request to speak form and turn it in to the secretary. If you are participating via Zoom and would like to comment on this item, please select the hand icon to indicate that you would like to speak. If you are calling in and would like to comment on this item, please dial 9 and then 6 to unmute yourself. I will wait a few minutes.
Recording Secretary, can you please share in Spanish what public comment we're taking right now? Thank you.
Para el público que está en Zoom, les me gustaría informarles que ahorita estamos recibiendo comentario público para el proyecto número dos que es referente hacia el 2025-03 para la propiedad localizada en 930 Norte Grande Avenue. Chair, we currently have one speaker on Zoom. Before continuing, I will be speaking in Spanish to confirm that this public comment is for item number two. Yesenia Marujo, si puede confirmar si usted gustaría hacer un comentario público sobre la propiedad localizada en 930 Norte Grande Avenue? Si por favor puede confirmar?
Si, es confirmado.
Okay. Ya puede comenzar a hablar. Le vamos a dar tres minutos, okay?
Okay. Mi nombre es Yesenia Marujo. Soy residente de Cornestor Village e investigadora de UCI Echo Gable. Esta, este edificio está muy bonito de condominios, pero mi pregunta es, ¿a qué tipo de residentes está enfocado estos condominios? La mayoría de las personas que viven en esta área trabajamos por el salario mínimo. Yo no me miro rentando o comprando ese tipo de condominios. Yo tengo un lema y qué es: Vivimos donde podemos y no donde queremos. Eso quiere decir que ese tipo de condominios o edificios que están haciendo, que son muy bonitos, los residentes de Santana, algunos que vivimos en zonas desfavorecidas, no podemos pagar ese tipo de condominios. Gracias.
Gracias, Yesenia. For the rest of the public, I would like to go ahead and translate in English. Yesenia did state that she wants to go ahead and acknowledge that the property is in very good condition. It's beautiful. And she would like to go ahead and ask the question as to who the property is being intended to, to go ahead and be occupied from. She wants to express that we all don't fall within the same economic ranges. And it is a pretty location, but again, there's, we all don't have the same economic status. Chair, we do not have any more speakers on Zoom or in public.
Thank you. Are there any final questions or comments for the applicant before I close the public hearing?
Their comment was related to item two?
Yes. Great. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. We can now have additional staff discussion before a motion is made. Commissioners Camilla?
Yeah, no, I guess I'm just trying to reconcile two issues, right? Where I think we've identified potentially an issue within the condominium subdivision process. I think that's a real concern potentially up here as far as making sure those rights are preserved. I know that the applicant's saying only a few months, but in planning time, that can go by really, really quickly. So I don't know, maybe if some of these issues can then be prepped and addressed and kind of taken directly to council. That way, they don't necessarily have to come back to us. So maybe kind of coming in with a recommendation to require add this or having the staff analysis ready to make a recommendation there at council rather than having it come back to us, us kind of toy around with it, and then ultimately be overruled anyways by the majority of the council. So that's, I guess, where I'm kind of at. And so I'm just trying to figure out what might be the most efficient way to address the issue while still, you know, moving it along.
And I'd like to ask staff, along, following up on Commissioner Escamilla's comment, knowing that, and ask you to answer, knowing that it's not a commitment. But if this item were continued, do you foresee it coming back in two weeks or a month or longer than that? Understanding the level of recommendations we might make tonight.
Okay, so we have a lot to unpack here. So I'm going to walk you through it, component by component. The first is that, upon further research, there already is state law in the Subdivision Map Act concerning condominium conversions that gives existing lawfully established tenants the first right of refusal for a period of 90 days. So that's existing state law. So I know that first right of refusal was one of the early topics that was brought up. So we're covered by state law on this matter. The second item I want the commission to think about is that, remember that as a sort of like land use authority commission, the conditions of approval should stay, and this is advisement, right? They should stay within the realm of addressing the sort of like physical, environmental, community impacts of a project request. So I'm hearing some commissioners talk about communicating upward to City Council. I've said that before to the Historic Resources Commission, and I'll say it again here, you know, that yes, if there are broader concerns that existing codes, existing policies may be inadequate to address concerns, that policy, this isn't the right forum for sort of policy generation. That's why we have commissioners that are appointed by councils, that you can upwardly communicate that to council members that appoint you so that they can work through the city manager to give direction to city staff to sort of like look at general plans, zoning codes, other programs and policies in the city. What I will say is that as part of the zoning code update, the city staff are looking at incentives for condominium conversion, because at the onset of this conversation, it seemed like people were excited by that, that idea, and just, you know, recapping that earlier part. But then these concerns came up. And so rightfully so, as part of that research, yes, of course, we are sensitive to the daily elements that our community faces, you know, whether it's displacement, whether it's affordability, all that sort of stuff. So it's part of incentives for condominium conversion. Of course, we will also be looking at making sure that we're not creating any unintended consequences of that, right? Displacement or being in violation of state law, let's say. So just know that already there's a lot going into the zoning code update. So if there are even incentives identified, they would only be ones that work for our community, not necessarily just could be plopped down in any jurisdiction and not be sensitive to the needs of our community. So I want the commission to sort of consider overall for this application, you know, if some commissioners or all commissioners feel that there's policy deficiencies, that again, the conditions of approval should be related to the impacts of the project. And if there's perceptions of policy deficiencies, that should go to the City Council. If nonetheless, this application is continued, I would say, I would recommend an indefinite continuance. And I hate saying that. That would require re-notification to the community. But the reality is that affordability, condominium conversions, tenants' rights, you know, applicant rights, it's a very complex five-way intersection we're talking about here. And I wouldn't want to come back prematurely to you with conditions of approval that we really don't see how they layer in with existing city policies and, of course, state law. So that would be my recommendation to you. If nonetheless, you want to say, okay, we'll come back in two weeks and let us know what you found. That's always another way of doing it, right? But I would just say that this is complex subject matter, which is why ordinarily, it's not at the commission level. It's ordinarily at the legislative level.
Manager, can I ask staff a question?
Thank you, of course. Commissioner Wu?
Are you aware of, across from Main Place, are those condos that they say orange, built? And they were live and work, right? Now, I knew some of the tenants that were using this photography or hair salon. But when they sold it, the new owner decided just to live instead of work there also, or others just have home offices. The point is, is that over time, there are less walk-in for businesses, whatever. So it seems that existing laws are working there to cover, you know, protecting the tenant, selling, and, you know, all that kind of stuff that we're learning about today. So there's a real-life example, you know, across our city in another jurisdiction that is close by that has seemed that what we're talking about is working.
Thank you, Commissioner Wu. Commissioner Fan?
Just want to confirm, this is time to discuss with staff, right?
Yes, so we have the opportunity right now to ask questions to staff. The public hearing is closed. Also can take a motion now.
Got it. I just want to, I'm not sure if this should be in conditions of approval or if staff wants to visit this first. I'm having a little bit trouble with the current parking situation within the site. There is, just from Google, there is a car park within the 15-foot sightline of the entrance of the lot, as well as there is a car park at the corner of the lot that, based on the tentative parcel map, there shouldn't be a parking spot there. And so if we were to approve this, you know, beyond the discussion that we're having right now, I would suggest either there is a condition that make sure that the parking layout is compliant with current city standards as well as a remedy to make sure that it's enforced, in terms of striping, whatever it is, just because. para mí no coincide con el mapa parcelario, porque no debería haber un parque de automóvil en el角落.
Sí, así que ese es un ejemplo muy bueno de una condición de aprobación que tiene un nexo a la solicitud y la comisión ha aprobado condiciones que eran similares en el pasado en mapas de subdivisión, requiriendo que los ccns de la comunidad tengan reglas de vigilancia de parking para cosas como monitoreo rutinario, asegurarse de que los vehículos son operables, etiquetas para el parque de invitados o residentes, asegurarse de que los automóviles están parcar en los espacios designados y todo eso. Así que podemos ciertamente esta noche mirar las condiciones de aprobación y ver si hay necesidad de retrofitar el lenguaje existente con parking, lenguaje de parking explícito también.
Me gustaría.
Gracias, Comisionada Fam. Tengo una pregunta adicional para el personal. Así que gracias por compartir con nosotros que la ley estatal actual proporciona el derecho de primer renuncio a los tenientes durante 90 días, así que cualquiera que viviera en el edificio podría tener la primera opción de comprar dentro de 90 días, así que eso es genial de oír. ¿Es eso algo que podría ser reemphasizado en una condición o qué sería como para nosotros enfatizar eso?
Sí, no es común para la ley existente ser simplemente imprimida en condiciones de aprobación para que sea abundantemente claro, de esa manera, si la propiedad de la actual propiedad cambia a un nuevo dueño, digamos, es como cuando heredan la propiedad y ven las condiciones, es abundantemente claro que es la ley estatal y que la expectativa de la ciudad es que sigas la ley estatal. Así que no hay daño en él, no modificaría la ley estatal en una condición de aprobación, pero no es atípico reproducir la ley estatal en una condición de aprobación.
Okey, y luego una pregunta adicional. Así que si esa es una condición que se agregaría basada en la ley estatal hoy, si al momento de venta la ley estatal cambió y no hay más ese derecho de primer renuncio, ¿todavía necesitan cumplir con él porque era una condición que hicimos?
Ustedes están bien esta noche. Diría que depende de cómo lo digas, ¿verdad? Si dices como, o, ya saben, cumplir con el Map Act de subdivisión, lo que sea, como a menudo cambiado, entonces las amendaciones, ya saben, podrían modificar esa provisión, pero si no dices como a menudo cambiado, entonces estás freírse un condición y siempre que no sea inenforzable, como los tribunales no han dicho que es ilegal o lo que sea, entonces aplicaría. Si, nuevamente, nuestro jefe de attorneys, Melissa, tiene algún consejo diferente, ya saben, solo diría que es importante escucharla también.
Correcto, así que estas son preguntas muy buenas y creo que, desafortunadamente, tengo que decir que depende, ¿verdad? Pueden haber problemas de preamputación, pueden ser problemas de que el cambio en la ley fue basado en una demanda. Puede, podría haber múltiples factores a los que se refieren, así que no necesariamente creo que porque tienes como una condición y la condición está escrita para que tengas, si la condición está escrita para que tengas que cumplir con la ley estatal, entonces tienes que cumplir con la ley estatal, lo que sea que la ley estatal sea. Puede no ser necesariamente vinculado a la ley estatal en ese momento. Así que es por eso, nuevamente, esta es una pregunta interesante y no quiero aconsejarle a poner una condición que no pueda ser enforceable y puede no ser defensible. Así que si esto es algo que quieres hacer, lo veríamos. Y creo que la pregunta anterior, solo quería volver a esto. Comisionada Escamia, creo que preguntaba si podríamos tener la condición puesto y luego simplemente moverla para fines de expedición al consejo de la ciudad sin que vuelva al comisionado de planificación. Hemos hecho eso, lo hacemos antes, lo hemos hecho antes donde la dirección es aprobar la resolución, por ejemplo, y luego añadiendo una condición en particular, pero típicamente hacemos eso cuando estamos muy claros sobre qué es esa condición y qué estamos intentando hacer y es algo que el personal puede articular exactamente cómo escribirlo. Eso, no creo que sea el caso aquí, así que no sé si eso va a ser un problema o no, pero quería responder a esa pregunta que tuvo. Puede no ser capaz de hacerlo y creo que si la resolución no es clara en términos de qué condiciones van a agregar, debería volver a usted, nuevamente, en este caso, realmente recomendaría que continúe, reabra y continúe el pleno público para cualquier reunión o si es, si es, si hubiera una fecha determinada, si no hay una fecha determinada, entonces puedes continuar con la dirección para que el personal vea eso y crear una condición adecuada, o dejar que sepa que no puede hacer.
Gracias. Comisionada Escamia.
Sí, no, solo tengo otra pregunta. Así que esto es solo porque hay muchas cosas diferentes que están pasando al mismo tiempo. Así que, ¿tenemos un tiempo esperado en el actual update del código de alojamiento? Porque entonces es la otra cosa donde, como si estas leasingas sean buenas para otro año y la provisión que estamos mirando es realmente más de una pregunta de política general. ¿Es eso algo teórico? No estoy diciendo, nuevamente, que no podemos decidir completamente la política aquí, pero ¿es eso algo donde las lineas de tiempo podrían en realidad funcionar si hay una requerencia adicional, no solo para la ley estatal, creo que nueve días, no 90 días, ¿fue 90 días o nueve días?
90, perdón.
Okey, escuché nueve. Lo siento. Así que, ya saben, si hay alguna requerencia adicional, ya saben, podríamos básicamente poner en eso, no necesariamente el derecho de primer renuncio, que parece ser cubierto por el estado, pero la requerencia para, oh, Dios mío, asistencia a la movilización, ¿verdad? Creo que eso fue.
Relocación.
Relocación, asistencia. Así que eso es realmente, creo que es lo que estaríamos mirando. Así que supongo que me estoy sintiendo más cómodo con la idea de mover esto más pronto porque creo que eso va a ser una discusión de política mayor como parte del actual update del código de alojamiento y lo que vamos a estar haciendo con la legislación de condominios aquí, que, nuevamente, todos hablaremos con nuestros respectivos miembros del consejo. Pero sí, eso es, supongo que es donde estoy en el momento ahora. Es como, en teoría, ¿eso se ajusta a ese actual update del código de alojamiento cuando estamos hablando de esa relocation assistance?
Gracias, comisionada. Así que el horario para el código de alojamiento comprensivo nos presenta el actual update a la comisión a finales de febrero de 2026 y luego avanzando hacia el consejo de la ciudad después.
Gracias.
Still no entiendo por qué estamos empujando este problema cuando hay una ley estatal cubriendo esto.
Bueno.
No hay motion en este momento.
Sí, no, pero, comisionada, no hay ley estatal con el pago de relocation para unidades de condominios, así que es por eso que hemos identificado como comisión un agujero en la legislación, así que es por eso que creo que estamos pasando y volviendo.
Dices que no hay ley estatal cubriendo esto y el jefe de attorneys.
No hay ley estatal cubriendo la asistencia a la relocation para condominios. Así que ahí es donde nuestra legislación actual aquí en Santa Anna cubre los pagos de relocation. Así que si alguien se deshace, ya saben, hay like relocación, like, sorry, relocation assistance, like, disponible. Así que ese es mi preocupación, ¿verdad? Es como, ¿qué es lo que se ve el fondo de relocation o el proceso se ve? Si alguien tiene que ser relocated después de una venta. Y eso es algo que está apareciendo aquí en este caso específico cuando se subdividen desde el entero complejo de apartamentos ahora a unidades de condominios individuales.
¿Qué pasó con el dueño decidiendo qué quiere hacer con la propiedad? ¿Son responsables por crear una situación social?
Bueno, creo que no estoy muy seguro con ese particular.
Pero no entiendo, ya saben, por qué estamos forzando un problema de vincular esta resolución, que es simplemente, o la subdivisión, vinculada a incluir un primer derecho de renuncia, no en el problema. Impusemos un problema sobre algo que simplemente, ya saben, pasa una resolución para permitir que puedan continuar con la subdivisión.
Así que, nuevamente, gran deliberación. Solo para algunos guardrails, se recomienda que cuando se están abordando entre sí, se estén abordando el presidente, no el otro. Así que gracias por eso. Y luego, segundo de todos, okey, así que suena como que tenemos una comprensión de la ley estatal cuando se trata de primer derecho de renuncia. Ahora estoy escuchando sobre la asistencia a la relocation. Así que yo, nuevamente, realmente animo a la comisión a pensar, ¿qué es eso que específicamente se ve? Que puede ser creado en una condición de aprobación. Si tiene un impacto financiero en el candidato, ¿hay una proporcionalidad rara de ese impacto a lo que se está pidiendo esta noche? Y si es así, está bien, pueden, ya saben, las condiciones de aprobación pueden tener un impacto financiero. El candidato debe obviamente aceptarlo. Y, segundo, ya saben, necesitamos aconsejarle esta noche si sentimos que estamos en el camino correcto allí. Y, nuevamente, si no lo hacemos, entonces necesitaríamos either irse sin eso o volver con una recomendación.
Gracias. Así que compartiré mis intereses en el derecho de primer renuncio, así que feliz de oírlo. Actualmente está en la ley estatal. Como sabemos, la ley estatal puede cambiar. Así que al agregarlo como una condición, no me gustaría que fuera vinculado a la ley estatal, pero entendiendo que actualmente está en cumplimiento con la ley estatal. Y luego sobre la asistencia a la relocation, no hay ninguna recomendación más allá, bueno, una sugerencia que tal vez tenga como mera nuestra actual, solo causa de evictione, protecciones. Pero difiero a la comisionada Escamia si hay otro comentario sobre la asistencia a la relocation en específico.
Sí, no, creo que, supongo que la forma en que lo veo es que probablemente no deberíamos vincular este tipo de discusión de política dentro de este proyecto en particular, pero que es algo que hemos identificado ahora para trabajar como parte del actual update del código de alojamiento. Así que eso es realmente, supongo que es donde, mi mente está yendo sobre la asistencia a la relocation, porque sí, debería básicamente coincidir con el uno a uno, como lo que damos a los alquileres, deberíamos a aquellos que ahora han sido creados en condominios, así que supongo que es donde mi mente está yendo. Pero tendremos que tener más tiempo de los detalles para eso y no tengo el lenguaje específico de recomendación para incluir, para enviar al consejo, pero estoy sintiendo que está bien tanto con el candidato, sus circunstancias, las circunstancias particulares de este caso, para básicamente avanzar incluyendo una referencia a la ley estatal. Sé que el preocupante es que la ley estatal cambiará. Solo, realisticamente, no veo esta subsección en particular siendo modificada a tiempo pronto. Es, creo que la sesión legislativa ya está hecha, así que no vamos a ver una nueva ley. Y si tenemos algún tipo de modificaciones, esas no serán realmente, realmente en lugar hasta enero de 2027. Así que todavía da a la ciudad suficiente tiempo para hacer cualquier tipo de modificaciones si esto es entonces modificado en el estado.
Así que, madame presidenta, tenemos una resolución, así que o votamos en esa resolución o sustituimos la resolución o modificamos la resolución. Son los tres opciones que tenemos esta noche.
Sí, así que.
Es decir, ahora solo estamos discutiendo.
Sí, no hay motion que se haya hecho para aprobar como es, así que tenemos la opción de, tenemos la opción de motion, de aprobar como es, de hacer amendaciones, de motion, de continuar. Hay algunas opciones.
Así que me gustaría llamar la pregunta para la motion.
Okey. ¿Hay un segundo?
Así que, una amendación amistosa, si es posible.
Solo estoy pidiendo la pregunta para votar como es.
Como es, señor.
Así que, ¿hay, hay un segundo? Así que no tenemos segundo en este momento. Comisionada Escamia.
Sí, solo me gustaría hacer una motion para incluir solo ese lenguaje adicional en referencia a los pagos de relocation en parte de las condiciones de aprobación. Creo que nosotros como comisión hemos hecho el punto claro al personal de que hay un problema general para mirar en el futuro, que no debería ser parte de la motion. Así que estoy bien con aprobar el, oh, Dios mío, la subdivisión con el lenguaje añadido referente al derecho de primer renuncio estatal y me gustaría que los segmentos relevantes de eso estuvieran incluidos dentro del lenguaje, no solo la referencia estatutaria, sino el lenguaje real de eso.
Condiciones.
En la condición, así que de esa manera, al menos sabemos que en el momento que fue adoptado y en lugar.
Me gustaría un segundo y luego.
Así que tenemos una motion.
Un punto de clarificación, igual que cuando pasamos la cosa del pueblo. Agregamos que lo pasamos, pero había algún elemento en particular que tomamos nota y pasamos a la ciudad del consejo, que si vieron la reunión del consejo de la ciudad, hablaron de eso. Así que lo que están diciendo es que no estamos diciendo al consejo de la ciudad incluirlo en esta resolución, estamos pasando la resolución, pero estamos haciendo nota de que tenemos algún preocupante adicional que está dentro de su alcance para mirarlo. Ya entiendo eso. Y escuchando al personal, eso puede ser la forma de proceder.
Así que la comisionada Escamia ha hecho una motion que agregaría una condición como hemos añadido antes.
Solo le pregunto si eso es lo que quería decir antes de votar.
Creo que usted perdió mi motion. Creo que es realmente solo aceptar la condición, las recomendaciones del personal. Estamos agregando una línea adicional para referir el lenguaje de primer derecho de renuncia, incluyendo el lenguaje dentro de las condiciones de aprobación aquí. Y creo que a través de nuestra conversación y el back and forth y honestamente el tiempo que pasamos en lo que pensé que iba a ser una conversación de subdivisión muy corta, lo siento, pensé que iba a salir de aquí mientras estaban todavía luzes afuera. La, esa conversación en sí misma ha ahora traído el problema hasta el punto donde creo que se resolverá a través del actual update del código de alojamiento o a través de un método alternativo. Si hay algún cambio en el estado, creo que tenemos un tiempo adecuado para abordar eso en enero de 2027, si realmente se convierte en un problema, porque sí, solo la forma en que las leyes estatales cambian, no veo esta clause en particular cambiando a tiempo pronto donde no tendremos la oportunidad de abordarlo ya sea como el comisionado o a través del consejo. Así que eso es, eso es todo, es más como.
Y como punto de clarificación, el primer derecho de renuncia solo dijo, tengo una oferta para usted y usted tiene primer derecho de renuncia, pero todavía tiene que ser un comprador calificado, ¿verdad?
Así que, comisionada, tenemos una motion, voy a llamar la pregunta.
Bueno, estoy tratando de clarificar porque usted piensa que impone que solo porque eres un teniente y tienes primer derecho de renuncia, que automáticamente vas a poder comprarlo.
Así que voy a aclarar, el primer derecho de renuncia simplemente significa que el teniente recibe la primera oportunidad de comprar. Más allá de eso, pasaría por un tipo de proceso de propiedad de casa típico.
Solo quiero escuchar que ustedes entienden eso.
Lo hacemos, gracias. Así que tenemos una motion, he hecho un segundo. Comisionada Escamia, una pregunta clarificada y incluyendo el lenguaje de primer derecho de renuncia como una condición. Mi comentario anterior estaba en esperando que no, que en su escritura no esté declarando que es una condición debido a la ley estatal, sino simplemente que es una condición y sabiendo que es, y sabríamos que es la misma condición que la ley estatal existente y lo llamo porque, aunque sé que la ley estatal puede cambiar este año o el próximo, podría cambiar en los próximos cinco o diez y tal vez en ese punto es cuando estén listos para vender.
Sí, no, definitivamente entiendo esa preocupación. Creo que desde mi perspectiva, yendo a nuestros comentarios de juez de la ciudad, solo quiero hacer que sea lo más defensible posible y creo que la ley existente y códigos y ordenaciones creo que serán un poco más fuertes y algo que podemos, ya saben, poner nuestra cabeza en y decir que según esta subsección en particular de la ley estatal, estaremos en cumplimiento. Y creo que agregar ese lenguaje específico dentro de las acciones recomendadas es adecuado para hacerlo. Yo, tú sabes, en plena, tú sabes, me encantaría decir que me encantaría más que la ley estatal, pero creo que eso no es algo que tengamos la autoridad y realmente esa capacidad de hacerlo esta noche en esta sesión en particular para este elemento en particular. Así que ahí es donde mi hesitancia viene.
Gracias, entendido. Comisionada, no sé si tuviste un comentario sobre eso, pero también tuve otra potencial amendación amistosa.
Comisionada Escamia lo pronunció perfectamente, iba a decir lo mismo.
Gracias. Así que otra idea para una amendación amistosa, sabiendo que actualmente tenemos la ley estatal, genial. Sé que, nuevamente, la ley estatal puede cambiar y a veces hay provisiones que permiten a las comunidades locales ir más allá. Y sé que hay lenguaje en nuestro elemento de vivienda donde el consejo de la ciudad ha expresado interés en políticas de primer derecho de renuncia, sabiendo que esos pueden venir más allá y no sabiendo lo que se ven. ¿Hay una forma de decir la condición para también permitir que una, supongo, permitir que, o hacer que el candidato tenga que estar en cumplimiento con cualquier otra provisión local de políticas sobre el primer derecho de renuncia al momento de venta?
Vaya adelante y terminen. No me di cuenta que.
No, eso fue. Eso fue, gracias.
Yo iba a saber solo que hay una, mi, entiendo que ya hay una condición que dice que tiene que cumplir con la ley local y otras leyes que son aplicables. Ese es un modelo, parte de la, es parte de, es una condición estándar de aprobación para la ciudad, así que difiero al personal, pero no sé cuál número es, pero creo que.
Así que me gustaría clarificar que aplicaría de esa manera, que si, siempre que el candidato que parece tener los mejores intereses de sus tenientes en mente, que apreciamos, decide vender, si en el momento hay un mayor derecho de renuncia en Santana que la ley estatal de alguna manera permite, la condición requeriría que cumplan con esa política local. Solo quiero asegurarme de que estoy oyendo que sería cierto.
Creo que eso sería correcto, sí.
Okey.
Una cosa que hice, quiero terminar, quiero que termines tu motion y no sabía si escuché un segundo y una amendación amistosa. Okey.
Sí, hice un segundo antes de.
Okey.
En los miembros amistosos.
Y usted hizo una amendación amistosa, que fue, no escuché.
En el tiempo no he hecho ninguna amendación amistosa porque no han sido aceptadas.
Okey, quiero asegurarme de que estoy oyendo bien. Una cosa que quería clarificar es que entiendo la condición. Entiendo que la motion es aprobar la resolución con una condición añadida que no solo. that would not just reference state law, but it would include some of the language from state law as well, right? For the subdivision, okay, I understood that. What I did want to just be a little bit clearer on is, and I do, we should ask the applicant that they would be amenable to that condition, but there are some limitations to what we can do in terms of conditions, right? I don't want to go into a whole discussion about that, but there, we've already, we get it from staff, right? There has to be a nexus. And so while I think the condition could be crafted in a way, if it is the case that state law is applicable and it's for the right of first refusal, we shouldn't have an issue. But there, but there are limitations, right? And so if we find that the condition would exceed our limitations, we would let you know. So that's a possibility as well. We'll do our best to follow that direction. But if we find, and my office finds that, you know, we have some concerns about it, we will, we will come back. We'll bring it back to you.
No, thank you for the, for that.
Thank you. So we have a motion made by Commissioner Escamilla. We have a second made by myself.
Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Fam.
I know that you were a second, but I, I wanted to add the conditions of, the conditions for the parking plan. So I'm not sure of Commissioner Escamilla, you just want to restate that?
Commissioner Fam, can you state your friendly amendment you're recommending to Commissioner Escamilla?
Even if you have second.
You can, anybody can make, recommend a friendly amendment.
Yeah, I recommend a friendly amendment for a parking management plan, as well as an onsite follow-up at the discretion of staff, at a duration at the discretion of staff, so that the current parking is up to city standards. That's my friendly amendment, if you would consider it.
Yeah, yep, totally okay with that. Not sure if there is any additional language or specificity that I need to state for staff, but I'm okay with the intent and I think with the description of what is being required, but just want to make sure that I'm not missing anything.
Yeah, I just want to verbalize it for the record that the parking management plan's intent is to address unauthorized parking, inoperable vehicles, and similarly natured matters.
That's correct.
Thanks.
Yeah, accepted.
Thank you, Commissioner Escamilla. So Commissioner Escamilla has made a motion. I have made a second. Would staff please be able to restate the motion with the friendly amendment and changes that have been made along the way? So that all commissioners understand what they're voting on. Or Commissioner Escamilla, I don't know if you'd like to go first?
I can try.
Thank you.
And so making a motion for the recommended action with the additional language for the right of first refusal, reflecting the state language along with the specific text from that section of the code, also including a requirement for a parking management plan in adherence to, oh my gosh, the City of Santa Ana parking standards as part of the conditions of approval, and doing so to subdivide this property into five units. I think that's, is that, is that it? Did I miss anything? No, okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. And before the commission moves forward and votes on this, if we want to check in with the applicant to see if they're okay with the.
So a point of clarification, I believe that I asked the applicant during the, when the public hearing was open, if they would be, if they would give the first opportunity to buy to their existing tenants, and they said yes. And they're also nodding in agreement that that is what happened. So thank you for that. Commissioner Oliva is wondering if we need to ask regarding the parking condition. Would that be best practice?
Yes.
So should I reopen the public hearing? Okay, so I'm hearing that.
Are you speaking for the applicant, or are we formally need to ask them again?
We can ask them again, and it can be a yes or no.
Thank you. So the applicant has agreed to a parking management plan as one of the conditions and smiled as he did so. Thank you. So we have a motion. Thank you, Commissioner Oliva. We have a motion made by Commissioner Escamilla, a second made by myself. I'm now calling the question. Secretary, may you please take your roll call vote?
Commissioner Escamilla?
Aye.
Commissioner Leo? Commissioner Oliva?
Aye.
Commissioner Fam?
Aye.
Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Vice Chair Benninger?
Chair Ramos? Motion approved by majority vote with Commissioner Leo and Vice Chair Benninger absent.
Thank you. Congratulations to the applicant. That concludes the business calendar. And I would actually like to take us back to public comments on non-agenda or non-public hearing items, noting that there were two speakers online that wished to provide comment on non-agenda or public hearing items. So Recording Secretary, I give it back to you.
I would like to go ahead and state that we currently have, at the moment, one speaker on Zoom. I will be switching over to Spanish. Para Yesenia Marujo, ¿está disponible para hablar?
Sí.
Okay. Vamos a poner tres minutos en cuanto usted comience a hablar, okay? Gracias.
Este, mi nombre es Yesenia Marujo. Soy residente de Cornet, Bellish. Este hemos seguido de cerca la actualización del Plan General de Santana y trabajando para lograr una actualización integral del Código Zonificación. Nos preocupa especialmente el vecindario de Cornet, Bellish, y sus alrededores, incluyendo la escuela primaria Kennedy y la preparatoria Centurion. En este momento seguimos profundamente desanimados por el proceso de actualización del Código de Zonificación por las siguientes razones. Nos informaron previamente que se distribuirá un borrador de actualización de Código Zonificación con un súper propósito para el área del vecindario Cornet, ante la reunión correspondiente de este mes. Sin embargo, no ha sido distribuido dicho borrador, a pesar de nuestras reiteradas solicitudes, incluyendo la consulta pública del 28 de julio. El 16 de septiembre, la ciudad de Santana anunció el plan específico de la familia Segestron por la zona cercana a Saucel Plaza. Un elemento clave son las viviendas y restaurantes de lujo. Se promete 9.3 millones en pagos de beneficios comunitarios sin detalles sobre cómo se gastará estos fondos ni el beneficio de quién. Así como 7.1 millón en financiación para viviendas accesibles mediante cuotas compensatorias que se pueden asignar a futuras viviendas. El anuncio del plan específico de la ciudad de Santana no menciona la justicia ambiental. El plan claramente atiende a los intereses de la élite y comerciales. Las comunidades desafavorecidas de Santana quedan nuevamente excluidas. Deberían existir planes específicos para todos los barrios desfavorecidos de Santana, especialmente el área del barrio Cornet, donde dos escuelas se encuentran dentro de un corredor industrial. El corredor industrial también impide el acceso seguro y peatonal en las escuelas. El 18 de septiembre, la ciudad de Santana anunció que la Asociación Americana de Planificación, capítulo de California, sección urbano-decepcional, la planificación exclusiva y la excelencia en el sector público. El alcalde Améscua declaró que los premios reflejan el compromiso del ayuntamiento con un proceso de planificación justo, transparente y exclusivo, y con la construcción de una comunidad equitativa y resilente para todos. Esta no ha sido la experiencia de muchos residentes de Santana, incluso los del vecindario Cornet. También queremos reiterar nuestra preocupación por el hecho de que no habrá oportunidades adecuadas para la participación de la comunidad y la priorización de sus necesidades. Solicitamos a la mayor brevedad posible más información sobre los planes para el área del vecindario Cornet en la actualización del Código Zonificación Integral. Un cronograma bien planificado para completar la actualización del Código Zonificación en los próximos meses, con tiempo adecuado para la participación de la comunidad. Gracias.
Gracias, Yesenia, por su comentario público.
Este, solamente para comentar, mandamos el comentario público a la comisión.
Gracias, Yesenia. Yeah, a closerosos tres minutos.
Okay, gracias.
Gracias, Yesenia, por su comentario. I'm going to be going over in English to the comment that Ms. Yesenia stated. She had comments regarding the zoning code update. She is concerned about Kennedy School and various locations around the city of Santa Ana. There has been multiple comments throughout these months being made as well, and she is awaiting for more information regarding the zoning code update. She wanted to voice all of this information that's currently happening with the zoning code update and upcoming as well.
Thank you. So with that, we're going to move on to staff comments.
Thank you, Chair. I have two items to share with the commission tonight. First relates to one of the topics that came up a few times and was mentioned by the speaker just now. The third round of community engagement for the comprehensive zoning code update is kicking off tomorrow. So tomorrow is going to be the first workshop in the third round, which will include a total of seven workshops, one of which will be virtual in case folks can't turn out in person. So if anyone is interested in that project, we have a project webpage, and they can reach out to us through the email that's listed on there, and it's the Case Planner Siri Champion. Or they could also give us a call at 714-667-2751. And if you're unable to make any of those seven workshops, that doesn't mean that you can't, that you can't participate or share your feedback with us. Don't think of that as the only opportunities to share anything you have to share with us. Anytime we're available to host meetings, meet with you, go over any of the drafts that you want, just feel free to reach out to Siri. And then the second item that I want to share with the commission tonight is a personnel item. Just wanted to share that Hema Sapien was promoted to Planning Commission Secretary, and her first day is today. So congratulations, Hema.
Thank you. Are there any commission, are there any comments from the commission, Commissioner Escamilla?
Yeah, no, oh my gosh. So for those of you that, chair, everyone here is already registered for APA 2025. So I'm not sure which one of my colleagues I'll be seeing up there, if any. But yeah, looking forward to that and the conversations. Not sure if any of the other staff will be making it and I'll see you guys up there. Oh my gosh, so that was the first thing. And then, yeah, just overall, appreciate the work that's being put into the zoning code update. I think definitely some of those one-on-one conversations with, you know, groups that are particularly interested in the zoning code update would be appropriate, because I think that sometimes folks don't necessarily understand maybe the way that particular projects are developed or like how land use decisions come about and, you know, that it's so much, so much of the process is driven by the private sector rather than kind of government projects and, you know, government-specific plans. So I think that that's super helpful. And then, yeah, just I thought it was a good conversation today. I know that we veered a little bit into policy territory, but appreciate the commissioners that were here, that were like, yes, let's, let's do this. And yeah, that's about it for, for me today.
Thank you, Commissioner Escamilla. Commissioner Oliva? Thank you, Commissioner Oliva. Commissioner Fam?
Yeah, I just want to say the outreach for the zoning code update has been very good. I got the mailers. I see the bus stop display. Yeah. But I think that there is an anti-zoning faction within the city because one of the bus stop got vandalized, and they specifically took the planning notice flyer off of the bus stop and graffitied it, so, off of harbor. So if you guys want to replace it, you guys should. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fam. Commissioner Wu?
I was watching you two for the council meeting in which we were just, they were approving the village project. And I want to highlight and congratulate staff for your professionalism, all of you guys. Because the questions that were posed to you were often, you know, strange or confusing. But steadfast, like in this meeting, you just explained the facts, man. And I thank you for that Joe Friday demeanor and, and way of explaining it so that it guides us from not having lawsuits and misunderstanding, which is your job. And I think when the city manager looks at performance, I think that's what the kind of thing count. So I want to go on record saying that, you know, I know it's sometimes difficult not to be able to speak your mind, but to then just provide the information such a way that it guides us through making the decision. But thank God we still live in California and in Orange County where we can express our opinion without being executed. That's something to be grateful for. And that planning process on the multimodal, that was, was that OTC or that's also planning too? It was planning too, right? No, it was OCGA?
Public Works Agency from the city is taking lead on that, but the planning department is participating.
Yeah, that was really active, and it was really good. I mean, there was three of us that was there. And, 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 you know, I saw residents, some residents always didn't like pipe lane and bike lanes, and they go, continue never to like bike lane, but others did. And, you know, they, I found that the residents did have good knowledge of the issues and specifically pointing out the places. And I saw staff taking, you know, copious notes and engage people, say, why, why this? And, you know, and try to further understand. And I thought it was a very good charrette process that went on. And again, that's another, that's why I think our, our planning department is so excellent. I'd like to follow up on a rumor, I think, is that are there some changes going on with the neighborhood initiative department or program that is being cast off or something? Or is it going to be reevals somewhere? You're going to, you're going to farm it out to a nonprofit to handle the training and, and listening to all the annoying requests from the neighborhood associations, like from my wife and others, Carl?
So we are always evaluating the services that we provide our community to enhance or refine and calibrate. But at this time, we are continuing to have ongoing conversations with CommLink board and make sure that we're all on the same page. And if any sort of like permanent changes were to take place, it'd be announced to the entire neighborhood association groups and CommLink.
And I want you to consider this, that other groups that are involved in advocacy, some are funded through universities, others funded through, you know, foundation. You know, the neighborhood folks are carpenters, laborers, and housewives, and, you know, and not that that's bad, not that they don't have the capacity, they have knowledge and they have history. But they may not have the resources to articulate, complete the applications and, and do the flyers. And that's where the department has been very helpful so that they could get those resources to get the word out in the community, to get, you know, people to the meetings, which like in the case, I think of the speakers, that a lot of these public hearing meetings has been notified. They go out through the neighborhood association network. We pass out flyers, tell people to go, have pre-meets beforehand. So it is an onus on us to do our job, you know, on both sides. And I think that the conduit for that is the staff in that neighborhood department.
Thank you, Commissioner Wu. I just want to say thank you, staff. Thank you especially to our attorney or legal sage here. I appreciate you all working with us as we come up with recommendations on the fly.
And thank you for, apologies again for having my microphone on when it should not have been.
Oh, it's okay. So thank you all for that. Thank you, commissioners, while I'm proud of the meeting we had tonight. I also would like to just uplift one of the public comments we heard. I know it was largely in Spanish, but seemed to really reflect the public comment that we received via email, as they were one of the signees, Yesenia Marujo. And actually want to uplift some of the questions that were named in that comment. And I know I made a question to staff a few weeks ago after the meeting, so would like to make it again just for the record and for everyone to be aware of what's happening. So staff, can you please? So staff, can you please clarify whether there is a overlay being considered for the Cornerstone neighborhood, or if there is another plan of some sort to consider and evaluate the zoning that is currently allowed there?
Thank you, Chair. So as was shared during round two of the engagement process for the comprehensive zoning code, there are different avenues that the city could take to address some of the EJ issues in that part of the city. The avenue that the city is moving forward with and as part of the draft and the proposal is not an overlay, rather is looking at a new zoning district that would be applied to certain parts of the city to act as that transition between sensitive land uses and industrial. So it wouldn't be an overlay, but it would achieve the same goals of having that distance or that buffer and transition of uses.
Thank you. And then we would be reviewing that zoning district along with the zoning code update in the same timeframe?
That's correct. The map that accompanies the zoning code update would all be one package, and as part of the third round, again, that map is going to be shared with members of the public.
Thank you. And is staff working directly with impact, with residents that could be impacted and stakeholders like those I have commented, to develop that so that they can also see it before it goes public?
So the map or the proposal that the city's moving forward with, that draft was developed based on the feedback that we've gotten, not just as part of the comprehensive zoning code update, but dating back to the general plan update. And I think the commenter that sent in also a written comment has been in written communication with Siri Champion, the case planner for the project. So there has been ongoing communication with that member of the public.
Thank you. Sorry, I know we're going back and forth, but I'm glad to hear that there has been ongoing communication, glad to hear that it was developed with community input and feedback, and wondering if the specific group that has made multiple comments has had the opportunity to see the map at, at this time?
I'm not sure if she personally has seen the map, but the map was displayed as part of round two. It's also going to be displayed as part of this third round of the community engagement, and I can just confirm with Siri after this meeting if the map has been shared with her. To my knowledge, I'm not sure if it has, just because it's been drafted and work in progress. So there has been changes from round two that's going to be shared in round three based on addressing community feedback, but we'll continue to share that. Anything that we have is posted on the city's webpage and is available for members of the public to review.
Thank you. I appreciate the ongoing effort for true community engagement, and I would ask that city staff, please reach out to this specific group of stakeholders. For me, it's also because it's, it's rare to see people be so engaged and have very specific recommendations for the area that they live in. So want to uplift that and encourage that citywide. So would ask Siri Champion to please, I don't know if it requires an individual meeting with this group, but to please sit with them and show them what's being considered.
We'll make sure to reach out.
Perfect, thank you. Well, with that, I'd like to adjourn this meeting at 7:48 PM. Thank you all.